Ladies and gentlemen, the regular meeting of the Village Council of Forest Park will come to order. This is the Monday, February twenty eighth, regular council meeting. We begin the meeting with the pledge of allegiance. If you are able, please rise. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Burns. Commissioner Maxim.
Here.
Commissioner Nero.
Here.
Commissioner Vogt.
Here.
Mayor Hoskins.
Here. Okay, is there a motion to approve the February fourteenth Village Council meeting minutes?
Nero will make that motion.
Thank you, it's been moved by Commissioner Nero, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Maxim. Any discussion on the minutes? There's no discussion, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Burns.
Aye.
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye. Next is approval of the February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two closed session meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, it's been moved by Commissioner Burns, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Maxim, discussion? There's no discussion, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Burns.
Aye.
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up for public comment tonight?
No, Mayor.
Okay. There are no communications formally, under department reports. We have one department report from the Fire Department. Hopefully everyone has had time to review that. Okay. Okay, moving on to the bills by resolution, Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Forest Park, Cook County, Illinois, that we dispense with the reading of the individual bills, inasmuch as each department head has approved and signed bills in the following aggregate amount for their respective departments. Refunds and allocations, one thousand seven hundred seven dollars seventy-four cents. Public Affairs, twenty-eight thousand three hundred forty-six dollars sixty-three cents. Police Department, one thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars fifty-six cents. Community Center, one hundred twelve dollars forty-two cents. Council Finance Clerk's Office, two hundred fifty-five thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars eleven cents. Council Finance Fire Department, ten thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars ninety-nine cents. Department of Health and Safety, twelve thousand four hundred fifty dollars sixty-one cents. Street Department, forty-two thousand four hundred forty-four dollars two cents. Public Property, forty-five thousand four hundred seventy-two dollars eighty-nine cents. Seizures, six hundred forty-eight dollars ninety-two cents. Federal Customs, one thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars twenty-eight cents. Tiff, six thousand two dollars. VIP, eleven thousand eight hundred eight dollars fifty cents. Water Department, one hundred eighty thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars six cents. For a total of five hundred ninety-nine thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars seventy-three cents.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, is there a motion to adopt the resolution on the bills?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, it's been moved by Commissioner Burns, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Maxim. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Burns.
Aye.
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero. Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye.
This is Resolution R dash nineteen dash twenty-two.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, we have no unfinished business before us tonight. Under new business, the first item is an ordinance amending the employee handbook of Village of Forest Park holidays to include Juneteenth as a non-union employee-paid holiday. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, it's been moved by Commissioner Maxim, is there a second?
I'll second.
Then seconded by Commissioner Vogt, discussion? There's no discussion, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Burns.
Aye.
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye.
This is ordinance O dash zero eight dash twenty-two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, the next item is a motion to approve a request from the Forest Park Juneteenth Committee to host an annual flag-raising ceremony at Village Hall on June sixth. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, it's been moved by Commissioner Maxim, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, it's been seconded by Commissioner Vogt, discussion? There's no discussion, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Burns.
Aye.
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye. Commissioners, the next item is an ordinance amending Section three dash three dash six, entitled License and Fee Number. This will modify the number of license, liquor licenses issued. Is there a motion?
Nero will make that motion.
Thank you, it's been moved by Commissioner Nero, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Burns, discussion? No discussion, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Burns.
Aye.
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye.
This is ordinance O dash zero nine dash twenty-two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, the next item is a resolution approving the execution of a balancing change order number seven of the contract with KLF Enterprises for the Altenheim Buildings demolition project. Is there a motion?
Nero, go ahead.
That motion.
Thank you, it's been moved by Commissioner Vogt, is there a second?
Nero will second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Nero. No discussion, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Burns. Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt. Mayor Hoskins.
Aye.
This is Resolution R dash twenty dash twenty-two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, the next item is a resolution authorizing the execution of a pay request number four for the Altenheim demolition project to KLF Enterprises Incorporated. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, it's been moved by Commissioner Vogt, is there a second?
Nero, second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Nero, discussion? There is no discussion, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Burns.
Aye.
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye.
This is Resolution R dash twenty-one dash twenty-two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, the next item is an ordinance approving waiving the bid and authorizing the acceptance of a proposal for audit and tracking software related to the use of body cameras between frontline Public Safety Solutions and the Village of Forest Park. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, it's been moved by Commissioner Burns, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Maxim, discussion? No discussion, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Burns.
Aye.
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye.
This is ordinance O dash ten dash twenty-two.
Okay, next is a motion to ratify the approval of senior trip contracts. These are for trips on May eleventh of this year, two thousand twenty-two, and also August fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, it's been moved by Commissioner Maxim, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Burns, discussion? There's no discussion, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Burns.
Aye.
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye. Okay, next Commissioners, is a motion to approve an entertainment license application submitted by The Lantern House at seventy-four fourteen Madison Street. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
It's been moved by Commissioner Maxim, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Burns, discussion?
Yeah, hey Mayor, before this goes to a vote, I don't know what the stance here, but I'm just looking at this and we're looking at dates, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. And, you know, maybe this one and then all other applications for entertainment license moving forward. I think it'd behoove the village to maybe take these on a month-to-month basis instead of looking at two, three months into the future, would be my recommendation. So maybe vote to approve for the March events and then April, in April, at a council meeting. That would be my recommendation.
You may want to be concerned, when is your April meeting? Maybe April second would already be passed by the time you meet in April. Not sure of any of the other dates. So they can submit an April application.
March twentieth, correct.
If you did it on the March twentieth, you could consider the April second and ninth dates, then.
Could it, could you show on the, the second meeting of each month?
So I think what council was saying, Commissioners, is that we could take the April component of his application for consideration at the second meeting in March, right? That way he'd have the chance to resubmit. But I think Commissioner Nero's concern was approving, you know, too much at one time. I think there's sort of...
That's why I said that maybe on the second meeting of each month, we could, the last meeting of each month, we could take a look at these applications and vote on them on a monthly basis, then.
Makes perfect sense.
Yep. So should I resend my motion, or?
The, the motion should be withdrawn and then a motion to approve only the March dates. And if you want to specify what those dates are in your motion, but you should withdraw. If the maker withdraws the motion and then the seconder withdraws, then you could start from scratch.
So Mayor, I'd like to resend my motion to, to approve these entertainment license for The Lantern House at this point for another motion.
You down there's a second.
What did you motion?
Yeah, the maker's got to withdraw first.
You do.
Just withdraw your motion.
I'd like to withdraw my motion.
And then the seconder, he can withdraw his second.
I will withdraw too.
Okay, so you don't have any action pending, so now you can entertain a new motion.
No, you got to do it in a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the entertainment license application submitted by Lantern House for their March twenty twenty-two dates.
Only.
Only.
Yeah, if you specify them.
March fifth, twelfth, nineteenth, and twenty-sixth.
Great.
I'm sorry, is the fifth, twelfth, nineteenth, and twenty-sixth?
Correct.
Okay.
You need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, since it's a motion, there's no document that would need to be changed other than the fact that you made it in the motion.
Fair enough.
And then obviously they'll need to be informed that they'll need to make an application again for the April dates.
Yeah, just one comment for that. So we would probably want to recognize some sort of notice then to the business owners of the going-forward kind of deal. Yeah.
We'll send out a letter, another communication. Okay, is there any further discussion on this application? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Burns.
Aye.
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye. Commissioners, the next item is a motion to approve a public right-of-way, right-of-way use request by O'Sullivan at seventy-two forty-four Madison for March fourth through seventh.
Nero will make that motion.
Thank you, it's been moved by Commissioner Nero, is there a second?
I'll second.
Then seconded by Commissioner Burns, discussion? No discussion, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Burns.
Aye.
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye. Commissioners, the next item is a motion to approve an entertainment license application submitted by O'Sullivan's Public House at seventy-two forty-four Madison. Is there a motion to approve?
Nero will make that motion.
Thank you, it's been moved by Commissioner Nero, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Maxim, discussion? No discussion, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Burns.
Aye.
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye. Commissioners, the next item is a resolution adopting a green streets policy. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, it's been moved by Commissioner Vogt, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Burns, discussion? Commissioner Maxim.
I have a few questions. I'm not sure who to direct them to, possibly Administrator Amadee. So we need to do this to get us more points on the, these grants that we're applying for, correct? But my, my major question is, you know, when, when we start looking at the village going forward on any infrastructure project, you know, we will need to determine if such green elements are financially reasonable and physically sustainable. I think that's great. I'm just wondering, I'd like a little more information on how we're going to determine that. You know, so a project comes up, we say, you know, we need to fix this alley or this street or whatever. We're in that, we're in the process and how and who determines, you know, whether this is going to be financially reasonable and physically sustainable.
Sure, so I'll try to answer that as best as I can without envisioning every scenario. You know, and when we look at doing projects each year, our village engineer will meet with myself, will meet with our Public Works Director, and we will, you know, in brainstorming projects, we identify what needs to be taken care of in conjunction with that project. Now, in addition to everyone's local history here, we have some sort of idea of what has the history been with flooding? Or can we add enhancements in the particular application in question? Every road is different. You know, I don't have the history here that Sale does, obviously. But, you know, maybe not every road is able to have a rain garden. Or maybe there's some roads that are spotty when it comes to flooding versus others where it's a little bit more, it's very visible. So it's just going to take a lot of, you know, our creativity. I mean, I can't give you a good answer right now on, is there things that we can consider based on what's occurred in the past? Based on if we have a combined sewer in the area? Can we look at pavers in some parking areas? Rain gardens to help with flood storage? So we're going to have to make a best effort to look at the different options that are there based on the history of that, that roadway in question. So there's not a one size. It's hard for me to give you a complete answer now. It's just, you know, it's part of the due diligence process. I don't know if that, that met with your, if that answered all your questions, but, I mean, there's a lot of different green applications that we can consider. You know, whether it be permeable, whether it be rain gardens. A lot of times when we do projects, remember we don't also do the sewer. You know, sewer is going to be a big, a big job moving in the next few decades just to separate that sewer. So we'll see what our right-of-ways can accommodate, whether it be rain gardens or whether it's appropriate for green. It just depends. Just one other comment there, Mayor. So on the due diligence side, your words, I think it's, are we just talking about an assessment using our resources here at the village? Or are we talking about, you know, two proposals? One with the option for green and one without? Is it the first one or the latter? So I'll give you an example. So one of the items that is, that is coming up later in the agenda is the STP program. And in the memo that is included in the packet, I specifically talk about Harrison Street. So with Harrison, we're looking at that area for some water main work, which will require a grant to obtain. The road also needs to be reconstructed as well. You know, we're looking at a six million dollar project without sewer separation, where, you know, hopefully if there's some federal assistance, we can provide that. But there's a lot of right-of-way on Harrison Street, especially along the north side, where we can consider rain gardens on the back of curb to help with flood storage. That's a prime example. Also, Harrison Street is a residential. It is a, a, a public use corridor, and it's also a business corridor where there's a lot of off-travelane parking areas. Those are areas that we can consider for permeable pavers to help with flood storage. So it just depends. You know, I'm just, you know, naming that one there because that's an obvious example where, you know, we have some opportunity for permeable parking areas that are off the travel lane. And along with the big right-of-way that's, that's there between, you know, the pedestrian sidewalk and the curb, those are primaries for rain guards. So that's, that's a great example of where, you know, we can really give some consideration there through best management practices, through the assistance with the MWRD. You know, the Illinois EPA has ideas as well. So there's a lot of resources we can reach out to of what options we can consider there.
I want to thank Moses for putting together the, the background on this. And I think you're right, it seems like it's kind of a no-brainer. We're going to be sort of forced into having to embrace sustainable and green infrastructure choices as we're hit with these heavier rainfalls and the effects of climate change. And a lot of it is education. There are many different approaches to green infrastructure. And I think just by committing to the future of looking at all of these projects through that sustainability lens, I think that is just going to help us to make these choices moving forward. And it's also another part of our education, I think, is looking at the real cost benefits of green infrastructure because it's often ignored and just looked at the performance between the flat costs and not the performance of the green infrastructure versus the gray infrastructure. And there are a lot of benefits that show themselves in dollars in a different way. And then I also think, speaking of dollars, it is those grant points. Like there's three grants that we're talking about on this agenda, and there's a spot for if we're using green infrastructure and we don't get those five points, right? And all of those points add up to help us get these, these grants, these grants for, for these projects. So I think you explained it well that this isn't a commitment that we have to do something that's going to be so cross-prohibitive for Forest Park, but we're going to make sure that we're looking at all of these opportunities and making sure that if we can do something that's mitigating stormwater, that's setting us up for future grant opportunities or other programs or expansion. To me, it just seems like a great commitment to the future of Forest Park and to our infrastructure.
One thing I want to add about green infrastructure, too. Remember, it's not just about flood storage. When we talk about rain gardens, it's also about water quality. That's a big deal, especially at the state level, that, you know, there's rumblings about, you know, salt conservation. You know, salt is the biggest pollutant when it comes to the quality of our waterways, especially the Des Plaines River. So just keep that in mind, too. It's not just about flooding, it's also about water quality.
And I would add, you're right, it's also about air quality because depending on what infrastructure you're using, that can be helping to clean the air and that helps with quality of life for our residents as well. Folks who live in areas with more trees, you know, there's less cases of asthma, for instance. I mean, there's all kinds of different things we can, we can read and look into all of that. But there are benefits that don't always get kind of compared when we're just looking at that flat bottom line.
Thank you, Commissioners. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Burns.
Aye.
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye.
This is Resolution R dash twenty-two dash twenty-two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, the next item is a resolution authorizing an application for the North Central Council of Mayors Surface Transportation Program Funds for Circle Avenue from Franklin to Roosevelt. Is there a motion?
Nero will make that motion.
Thank you, it's been moved by Commissioner Nero, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Burns, I mean Commissioner Vogt, I'm sorry. You look nothing alike. Discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Burns.
Aye.
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye. You're both very wise Commissioners. It's just a mistake from the chair.
That's Resolution R dash twenty-three dash twenty-two.
Okay, next is a resolution authorizing the application for the North Central Council of Mayors Surface Transportation Program Funds for Harrison Street. This is from Des Plaines to Harlem. Is there a motion?
Nero will make that motion.
Moved by Commissioner Maxim, is there a second?
I'll second.
Joking, Commissioner Nero made the motion.
I kind of said that.
Commissioner Vogt made the second. Discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Burns.
Aye.
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye.
This is Resolution R dash twenty-four dash twenty-two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is a resolution authorizing the application for the North Central Council of Mayors Surface Transportation Program Funds for Jackson Boulevard. This is to fix from Des Plaines to Harlem, is there a motion?
I think I'm going to go for the sweep here. Nero will make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Nero, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Vogt, discussion? No discussion, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Burns.
Aye.
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero. Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye.
This is Resolution R dash twenty-five dash twenty-two.
Okay, Commissioners, that concludes our new business for this evening. We are at Administrator's Report, Moses.
The first item under ten A is a request for policy direction from the council about the village possibly entering into a grant agreement with the Morton Arboretum to have a street tree, public property tree inventory performed and an urban forest management plan composed for the Village of Forest Park. and an urban forest management plan composed for the Village of Forest Park. There's a memo in your packet along with accompanying documentation with regards to this endeavor. A a grant opportunity is available to the village to have a an inventory done of the entire village and other public property that is managed. So for example, the grove that is a managed area is a mo- a mode area. So properties like that that we actively maintain. And with the inventory and the urban forest management plan would give the village a a very good management document and planning document that will tell us what we do have in town, what our strengths are with regards to our urban forest here, our resource that we have here, and what we need to do to plan for the future in terms of plantings, where we need to target certain species to diversify the type of trees that are in town to be prepared against any coming threats. And, you know, how to document and manage through our G I S system the preservation of our forest and the promotion of our forest for the years to come. So we do have this grant of that opportunity available to us. We would be responsible for paying half of it, about $9,000. The deliverable will be available sometime around June. And then at that time, in order to receive funding, so the other half to pay for the the inventory and the management plan, we would be required to update our tree ordinance. We'd already have a tree ordinance in the books right now, but we would have to enhance that. So what is in your packet this evening is a mockup of what that ordinance would look like that meets the requirements from Morton, from the Chicago Region Tree Initiative in order to qualify for that grant. Specifically, the ordinance basically governs trees on public property, not private property. That's currently our policy now, and I'm not looking to extend that on to private property. So, you know, essentially, the inventory of trees on public property and the management of that would be pursuant to an urban forest management plan that would be composed based on the results of our tree inventory. So with that said, if if anyone has any questions, I I I did provide a memo about this in your packets. If he has any questions right now, I'd be happy to answer them. So Parkway is public. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, Parkway is public trees. Yeah, it does not pertain to trees on private property. No, public lands that are maintained by the village. So if the village happens to own a, you know, a couple acre parcel that's basically a a grove of 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 trees that is not maintained, that that's not included in the inventory. Any other questions?
So we used to have an arborist, right, as part of Public Works? Do we still, and is that something we're planning to do again? And then I guess the third question is, is this something that an arborist on staff could do?
Can you take this question, Sale? Do you mind? Okay. So the before Sale answers the question, the ordinance reads a certified arborist. Okay, it doesn't say village. So I'll let Sale provide some background, the history of the arbors.
We did have an arborist on staff. It was Pat Collard. He went to school, he got his license. He never renewed his license due to the fact that they ever got any kind of stipend for having a license. And he wasn't really in the forestry department that much, so he let it lapse. We currently don't do not have an arborist. We use Bob Davis, he's a master arborist from Davis Tree Care for any of our tree questions. And I am looking to see if any of our guys do want to go to school to become an arborist or any future hires we have coming up.
So then, could this project, you know, inventorying the trees and, you know, looking at their health, could that be something that could be done by our our village arborist if we get one?
It it can be, it's very time consuming. We currently, we're working on our water inventory. I started it when I was in the water department. Currently, our current water operators are trying to do it. We're very short staff, trying to get all that done in a short period of time compared to a company coming out and doing it and getting half the money for it, it's not even comparable. They would have a full staff, I'm not sure, but they would sign into our G I S. And they would just start plugging away at it, and it would be real time and ready to go right away.
Is there a possibility of looking for, I mean, of course, we can always look, right? What it, what are the chances maybe of finding a grant that could cover the the village share that we would have to pay? Our 9,000, you know, whatever dollars?
Yeah, I I cannot answer that. This this grant that's available to us is a 2020 grant cycle that went unused through this grant project, the program in the last few years. So if we do not pursue this grant that's available to us right now, the money's ours if we want it, then we would have to, you know, search for other grant opportunities to pay for the full cost. Just to follow up what Sale said, the the services and the deliverables would be a turnkey deliverable. So that extra $750 for G I S is taking their work, their data, their findings, and inserting that into our G I S program where the village and staff does not have to do anything with regards to using this data and be ready to run with it, you know, based on the findings of the the inventory and the management plan. So it'll it'll be turnkey.
I'd like to add real quick, going to the water seminars, I've noticed that a lot of towns have actual G I S department that actually does this twenty, seven days a week or five days a week, whatever it is. Since we are a smaller community, we've been trying to do the water one in house and to take the opportunity to have a company come out to do it for half the cost, just our tree inventory, it's a big, it's a big win.
I thought you put together your your background in this very well as well, and and thank you for for spending your time on that. I do want to just add that I don't really think it's a question of if we do or don't do it. I think we have to do it. You can't really manage what you don't know you have. So I I think to be able to have a company come in and have half of it covered. We've been trying to figure out how to pay for a tree survey for at least as long as I've been here. I don't know before that. And like you said, with time, it not only saves time doing the inventory. I mean, if if they were doing it by themselves, it would probably take years and years and years. At that point, it's constantly changing, you're losing trees because of disease, because they fall down, because of whatever it is. Whereas if we can get a company in and get this done in a very short amount of time, it's saving him manpower there. But also, once we have this bird's eye view, so or, you know, a other staff member doesn't have to be driving around town trying to figure out, you know, where the holes are for us to plant for the next season. You can actually just look and go, Lathrip's looking really thin. We're going to have to concentrate, you know, for the next season there. So it's a time saver in in that sense as well. But it also, it it helps us manage, it helps us budget, it helps us really know what we're looking at. If if we can see that we have X amount of one tree and a lot of it, a lot more than we thought, that's going to help us if there's a disease that's affecting that maple or that whatever tree it is. So to have that kind of information, it's giving us up to date information rather than having to run around and 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 spend all that extra time just sort of trying to fill in those gaps because we don't really know where we stand. And, you know, once this is there at that point, Sal and and the designated staff members can be updating it on the spot. So the big hurdle is getting this done. And $9,000 may sound like a lot, but if it's a one time payment, I mean, it's apples and oranges, but we're going to spend, you know, $4,000 a year on software. That's something we just approve. I think the value is there, especially having half of it covered.
Okay. So we are at Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Burns.
I don't have any reports, but I want to.
Yeah, there's. Moses, you sat down.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, so back back to ten A, there is nothing for approval this evening with regards to the tree grant. If you would like me to pursue it, then the Council will approve a resolution at the next meeting, authorizing entering into that grant agreement. So that would need to be prepared. So at this time, I will need some policy direction if this is something that the council would like to pursue. And.
Yes.
Okay. And then ten B is is informational. There is a memo in your packet about a few grant programs that are available for electric vehicle charging stations. So this kind of touches upon Commissioner Maxim's theme about utilizing multiple grants to lessen the village's costs for projects. And the reason why this is on the agenda is because the Village Council at the Mount Fourteenth Meeting, if you would like to pursue this, would have to adopt a resolution authorizing a grant application for the Invest in Cook program. So what's being targeted for that program are electric vehicle charging stations at Constitution Court, preliminarily, the cost of which are about $75,000. This grant will pay half of that. So it's staff's intent, the blessing of this council, is to apply for this grant along with at least two or three others to ensure that any out of pocket costs of the village is either zero or minimal. Once all those costs become ascertained, including if we're going to have an out of pocket cost, I will take that back to the council to authorize the expenditure of those funds. So, you know, if there's no objection by this council, I I would like to proceed with the resolution at the next meeting. But under the caveat that, you know, like we're facing with five, ten desplains, like Commissioner Maxim's comment earlier tonight, it's our intent to minimize the any out of pocket costs associated with these E V stations. It'll be great to have these. Our current station is out of service. There are no public E V stations in proviso at the current present time. So it'd be a nice amenity, you know, not just for our area, but for also our downtown business district.
Any feedback for Moses, Council? Any objection? Commissioner Maxim.
So the reason we've chosen this project as opposed to a different project through Invest in Cook is because they're specifically offering money for these electric charging stations.
Yeah.
I mean, were there other projects we the village considered before deciding this is what we want to apply for?
Yeah, so it's it's internal staff consideration, to be honest with you. So this is the same project that we are receiving funding for this year for the Prairie Path Extension from Madison Street to Van Buren. I've had conversations with the Village of Maywood to complete that gap in terms of the path from the Van Buren to First Street. It is not something that Maywood is pursuing, at least at this year, but I'd like to keep that conversation going for the future. You know, right now, there there will be access to the Prairie Path, you know, despite our efforts between Madison and Van Buren. But a delineated path would be nice, you know, as you make your way towards First Street. So regional type transportation projects are what these targeted, in addition to E V charging stations. So because we're not pursuing that and be, you know, because of the time that would be associated with obtaining easement rights from the C T A about that property, this is another thing that we look at at targeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Moses. Okay, so we are at Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Burns.
I really don't have a report, I just have kudos to the police department for jobs well done this week with catching a couple of aggravated carjacking offenders, recovering a vehicle, a weapon out of the vehicle, and also getting somebody else on on one of our side streets that was armed with a Glock with sixteen rounds and and a clip. Nobody was hurt. Bad guys went to jail and we took two guns off the street. Good job, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner Burns, Commissioner Maxim.
Just a really short report, that last week, the Zoning Board of Appeals met and unanimously approved combining the two advisory boards, the Z B A and the Plan Commission into one. And I believe that's going to come before the Village Council in March.
Commissioner Nero.
At March fifth is parade day in the Village of Forest Park. And I know our Public Works Department is going to be working hard to make sure that the street is in proper order and garbage cans are emptied. And so just a quick reminder to our wonderful residents and all the folks coming out to do your best to make sure that our street stays clean, tidy, and that everyone is well behaved. End of report, sir.
And that includes council members as far as being well behaved?
All inclusive.
Commissioner Vogt.
Just a quick update to to mark your calendar. We're, the Rec Board is going to host another cleanup day in the village for April. Should have been, April 24th with a rain day of April 30th. And they'll be meeting at the ruse at 9:00 a.m. And just keep an eye out. Relatively soon, we should have a a registration link available to folks and some more information. But I just want everyone to hold the date for now.
At the ruse, she said.
At the ruse? Okay, Commissioners, real quick. March is going to be International Women's Month, and also it brings International Women's Leadership Day, I think. So the village may have some media that highlights some of the women leadership tradition we have here in Forest Park. So there'll be more to come on that. And contributions and ideas are welcome from this board. But we want to do something to kind of recognize the theme. Last week, we were invited to participate in the meeting with the Illinois State Police to discuss installing additional cameras. The Illinois State Police are putting cameras along the Stevenson Expressway and the Eisenhower Expressway. So one will go up at Des Plaines and the Eisenhower, hopefully to aid in catching more bad guys and as well as deterring crime generally. And then, of course, as Commissioner noted, Commissioner Nero noted, this Saturday is the Forest Park St. Patrick's Day Parade. Traditionally, the Village Council leads the parade, it starts at one. So hopefully, everyone will be assembled before one. We're looking forward to a very good time as usual. And then lastly, District 91, our K through eight school district wanted us to mention that they have a couple of meetings, town hall meetings put together by the Citizen Advisory Council. So on March 8th, in the afternoon, 3:30, there'll be a meeting at Garfield School. On March 9th, at 7:00 p.m., there'll be a meeting at Betsy Ross School in the south part of Forest Park. March 12th at 10:00 a.m., a meeting at Forest Park Middle School in the 900 block of Beloit. This will all be on on our village social media. But Commissioners, you you may or may not want to mark your calendars and come out and hear some of the concerns of the residents as it pertains to the school. Commissioners, that concludes my report. The Chair will now entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to five I L C S 120 slash two C two to discuss collective bargaining matters. Is there a motion?
Nero make that motion to adjourn into closed session.
Thank you, it's been moved by Commissioner Nero, is there a second?
A second.
A second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Maxim. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Burns.
Aye.
Commissioner Maxim.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins.
Aye, we stand adjourned.[1793.97]